I just got out of COVID jail yesterday. It was an interesting fourteen days.
Yes.
And actually, my other two commissioners are awaiting results on tests. So our meeting is actually going to be canceled for today. Other than the public meeting or public hearing, which is on for ten o'clock.
Okay.
And Greg, your support letter will be one of the items that we'll be talking about around nine forty-five.
Okay.
Because Allison and Tom both will be calling in about nine forty-five.
Okay, I'm gonna have Thomas Baker to probably do the presentation on that. He's very engaged with the VICE Center. And so he may be here, he's online now, but Thomas will be probably doing that presentation. If I can get back in here, I will be on here, but it'll probably be Thomas. I'd rather him do the presentation. He's got his fingers on all the buttons over there.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, everybody. For right now, we're just going to take a break until like nine forty-five. Amy should have put a listing on there somehow, or as people come in, we'll tell them. But thank you for your patience with us. COVID is very rampant right now. We're having somewhere between seventy and eighty people a day in Fayette County testing positive for it. So it's important that everybody stays safe.
Well, Commissioner, it's good to see you back in the chair, that's for sure, because this code's a scary thing.
Yes, sir, it is. Thank you, Greg. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else want to ask a question? And then we'll okay, doesn't look like it. Alright, so we're gonna take a little break until nine forty-five. And then that's when the other two commissioners are going to join us for a real quick rundown of things that we need to discuss. And then at ten o'clock, we have a public hearing. And then everything else that's on the agenda will be pushed back till October the sixth, other than Ruth's agenda items, which are time sensitive. So thank you very much. We appreciate it. And we will talk to everyone about nine forty-five.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. We were on earlier and told you that some of the things we're gonna cancel and push back until October the sixth, and it's due to the other two commissioners waiting test results for COVID. So I have invited Dr. Stewart to give us a brief update on what's going on. And Amy's going to cut this and use it different ways. So I'll tell her all about that here in a little while. Okay, so Dr. Stewart, it's up to you. Go ahead.
I'm Dr. Anita Stewart with the Department. Thank you for having me this morning. So if you're not aware, we are in a significant surge of COVID-19 cases here in Fayette County. This is happening across our entire state. We have the fastest rate of rise that we've seen during the last eighteen months of this COVID-19 pandemic. We're seeing upwards of two hundred and sixty to three hundred cases a week, which is record highs for us in the last two weeks, which is you know, anywhere from sixty to eighty cases a day, sometimes more. This is over the weekend, we had a hundred and thirty cases in the weekend. We're seeing record numbers of pediatric population with zero seventeen test positive, and with the highest numbers being in the five to eleven H group, which are the ones that are ineligible to be vaccinated at this point. Right now, our hospital systems are working very hard to maintain capacity. However, due to staffing issues, we are struggling. We are having to hold patients in the emergency department waiting for beds. Patients are being transported out of state. We flew someone to Pittsburgh yesterday and the day before. We are typically on at least a two to three day wait at tertiary care facilities. So this is not just for COVID-related care. This is for care associated with heart attacks, strokes, traumas, other cervical complications, things like that, that we need further care for. So please note that we're not immune to that here. In fact, we're seeing increased pressures in our system related to that. So what I'm asking our community to do is to, everyone really needs to do their part to help slow the surge. Things that you can do to slow the surge are number one, to get vaccinated. So if you've not been vaccinated yet, it's not too late. You have vaccinations available at the health department Monday through Thursday, nine to three, you can walk in and get them. All of our federally qualified health centers and local pharmacies have vaccinations. So please, you can go to vaccine dot gov, vaccinefinder.gov, if you're looking for a certain type, find out where they are and go get them. We know that they work very well at preventing hospitalization and death. And so of our hospitalized patients across West Virginia, those that are in ICU, ninety percent of those are unvaccinated. So what we know is that vaccines do work. They're doing a good job at what they're designed to do. Okay, other things that we can do is to wear masks when we're indoors. And we can wear masks when we're crowded outdoor areas. Okay, so if you're in the stands of a football game, or if you're on the sideline somewhere, you should be wearing masks to help protect. Okay, other things that we can do are wash our hands, stay home when we're sick. So if you feel sick, we have allergy-like symptoms, sinus symptoms, nausea, vomiting, any of those things, you need to get tested. We encourage you to get tested and stay home until you get your results. There's testing sites all over our county. We have great partner support doing testing. So please find one of those sites. Other things that you can do is, you know, avoid large gatherings, make good choices for your family and our community to help keep us safe. Be in well-ventilated spaces, opening the windows if you're in a closed space. Those are all things that we can do to keep ourselves safe.
I know Dr. Stewart and Terry are personally takes care of our health department. Helped me through a lot when I was going, going through my COVID. I actually thought that I had a sinus infection. And I said, I said, Terry, I have a sinus infection. Do you think maybe I should get tested? And she said, you get down there right now. And I hopped in the car and drove. And she said, well, I didn't think you'd get here this quick. But I did. And actually, I tested and I did have it. I had two rough nights. But then after that, I, it was just, you know, sleeping. Slept eighteen hours one day. It was pretty nice. But now I have this bad habit of two o'clock, I think that I need to take a nap. So I need to break that. But she's correct. There's a lot of COVID right now going on in our area. What more of a period do you think, maybe up to four weeks, we may be experiencing?
So I think our numbers right now, they're predicted to continue to rise through between the twentieth and twenty-sixth are what the models are predicting. But remember, hospital capacity will still be stretched two to three weeks past that peak. So our healthcare workers are tired and are spread very thin right now. We're understaffed. They're doing the best they can to take care of you. They are working really, really hard for you. So we all need to do our part to help support them in this. And that's to slow the surge, slow the spread, so we're not overwhelming our hospital systems.
Yeah, and our healthcare workers, including the ambulances, they've done amazing. And without them, we would be really hurt in our county. So it's a, it's a win-win situation. If we do the things we're supposed to do, be you know, spread apart, wear your masks, wash your hands, do everything you can to prevent it from happening. And don't be like some people said that it'll, it'll never happen to me. Because it will. I used to think well, if. Now it's not if, it's when. And I'm very thankful that I did have the vaccination because I know what I went through for two days, and I would not wish that on anyone. So Dr. Stewart, Terry, thank you very much for both what you're doing. It means a lot to the county and means a lot to our healthcare providers also having you out leading in the front. So we deeply appreciate it. Thank you for what you do. Same thing with all of our other healthcare workers. And with our ambulance personnel, we really appreciate what you do. So thank you. And anything else you'd like to add? My father, so. Terry, anything you'd like to add? Okay, testing today at?
The testing today is from ten to two at our soon to be open location on Maple Lane, which is behind that express. We'll also be there tomorrow, ten to two, and Friday, ten to two. They're also testing tomorrow at Smithers between the high, between Valley Precay and Gateway Center for three to six. River Health is testing every day, nine to three. Reno Medical Center is testing every day, all of their sites. Access Health is also testing. But please, you know, we're asking people, if you do need a test, do not go to the hospital for urgent cares unless you're ill and need to be seen by a healthcare provider. We encourage you to go to one of the free testing sites first.
Yes, please go. And if you're feeling rough, please get tested. And don't go out. Okay, thank you, ladies, very much. Amy, is anybody in the room here?
No, nobody's in the waiting room.
Okay, good. Okay. You want to go ahead and turn me off? Allison on?
That's a cell phone number, but it's not.
Well, I'm gonna be talking, so I'm not gonna have my Tom, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yep, Allison, are you there?
Um, I don't believe she was able to make it today. She had a meeting come up last minute, so she was gonna be out. I wasn't sure if she
Different Tom and different Allison.
Oh, okay, different Tom, different Allison, sorry. Commissioner, Tom Luisis, are you on the line? Is he unmuted?
Yes.
Tom, are you there?
He has to unmute himself.
Okay, alright. Yep, I got you. Allison, are you on there? Is Allison on?
Yeah, she's on. She might be muted.
Allison, you might want to unmute yourself. Because you and Tom should be unmuted for the
Alright, I'm unmuted, I think.
Okay, thank you. Alright. As I said earlier, unfortunately, we have two commissioners that will be awaiting results of COVID tests or have been around people with COVID. Since I personally had it two weeks ago, we decided to do this remotely. And we are going to move the following items to October the sixth. It's the nine thirty, the nine forty-five, ten fifteen, eleven, and eleven thirty off of the agenda. They'll be added onto the ten sixth agenda. So the public hearing will still take place at ten o'clock. We'll do the generic stuff that we generally do so we can pay our invoices and vouchers and approve payroll. And we have to do the time-sensitive stuff that's presented by Ruth Lanier at our meeting. Thanks, everyone, for being on. Guys, I need a motion to approve payroll that'll be payable on September the thirtieth.
A motion on the thirty.
I second it.
Alright, we've got a motion to second payroll payable on nine thirty. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that's passed. I need a, an approval for a motion to approve vouchers and invoices.
I move to approve them, vouchers and invoices.
Okay. And I'll second them. All, all those in favor of paying our vouchers, invoices, and our vendors?
Aye.
Aye. We must have lost Tom somewhere. Okay, so
I can see him saying aye.
Okay, so you can see him saying aye. Okay, alright, cool. I need an approval for the estate settlements.
I move that we approve them.
So we have an approval in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ruth?
So okay, the first thing we have is, we have a request for a support letter from the city of Montgomery regarding funding for that center. And that is what Tom Spaker is on line for. Do you have questions for him? Hi, Amy. Okay. Do you have any questions about the letter or?
Allison, Tom, do you guys have any questions about the support letter for the city of Montgomery for the VICE Center?
No.
Okay. Then we need a motion to approve it.
And we need a motion to approve if you're in agreement, and also permission to state your names.
Okay, I move we approve it.
I second it.
Okay. We have a motion to second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's passed.
Alright, next item is a recommendation from
Michelle?
Yes. For a new hire.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions on Michelle's request to hire a person to start on October first?
In the budget, Ruth, right?
Yes. Is that the same?
Actually, we'll let
Yeah, it is within the budget. And his name, I don't have my letter.
Cody Lewis.
His name is Casey? Oh, Cody.
Lewis.
Lewis, yes. Any questions?
No.
I need a What was that, Allison? I'm sorry.
I said I didn't have any questions.
Okay, I need a motion then.
Alright, I move that we approve the county clerk's hire.
I second.
Alright, we have a motion to second to approve the county clerk's hire starting on October first. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passed.
Okay, so number three is a draft stack strategy for increasing enforcement of litter control. And then MOU with the solid waste authority, our Anthony did not have enough time to review and talk to us. He's in grand jury, so that's gonna have to be postponed because he had some things I think he needed changed.
Subverting.
Yes. So that is not, it'll have to be postponed until ten six.
Okay, let's go to number four.
Alright, so this is for the CIFA grant application due on October first. Is Gabe on there?
Yes.
Oh, Gabe's on there too.
And Gabe, you on there?
I'm here, yes.
Okay, you want to talk about this one?
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear Ruth. She's breaking up a little bit.
It's your CF, your grant application, the one due October first.
Yes. I need a, basically a signature from the office holders that will be affected by the project. And so we do anticipate potentially putting records from the Fayette County Commission in the historic jail. So, so I'll need your signature, John. And also, there's a letter of support articulating that the county commission agrees to the requirement to pay twenty percent of the overall project cost to keep, in keeping with the requirements of the courthouse facilities approved and authority grant. So thus far, our budget looks like eighty-five thousand dollars to replace thirty-eight windows over at the historic Fayette County Jail. Putting our match at about fourteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so Gabe, if I understand, we're going to be replacing the windows at the jail here at the county level. And there's forty-one windows?
Thirty-eights.
Thirty-eight windows, okay. So we're applying for that grant, and our match is fourteen thousand for that match.
As of the numbers I was given by Dan Snead this past week. Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright. Questions from Tom or Allison on that one?
I'm good.
Same, I'm fine.
Okay, I need a motion then.
An approval to stamp?
Okay, I move that we approve the grant application.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the grant application, along with stamping names. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passed.
Thank you, commissioners.
Then the last one is a grant application. West Virginia American Water is doing grants for bottle filling stations. Yeah, so we're going Yeah, I think it's great. If you guys will, Abby should be on there if you have questions about it.
Are you unmuted? Okay, good. Abby, can you tell us a little bit about this grant?
Yeah, we were just presented with the opportunity from West Virginia American Water to apply for a grant for a refillable or water station for reusable water bottles. So talking with Gabe and Ruth, we determined reusing the current water fountain that's right outside the commission room as a good location for the new water fountain station. So that's the grant that we had put in. We just need your approval and signature on that.
I move that we approve it.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the grant for the West Virginia American Water Bottle Filling Station will be put outside of the commission room and to stamp your names. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay.
And then
Alright, and we have some stuff from Eddie.
Yes.
Okay. This is real property. Real property taxes. These are just exonerations caused by being double assessed, the class being changed, and erroneous values. So I need a motion to accept the real estate exonerations.
Well, I move that we accept them.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the real estate exonerations. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, this one's approved. What else you got? Oh, that's it. Well, fantastic. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we have future agendas, but guys, I know you don't feel that well, so we can hold off on that since we're gonna be adding a lot to the sixth anyway. Okay, we have some combine, divide, and segregate. One, two, three. Okay, I've got three combined, divided, and segregate lands to get approved.
Are they all the same property owner?
Uh, no, let me tell you what we got. We got an Aaron Whitfield. We have a Dallas Andrew Duncan and Ricky Lee Foster. Oh, there's four, just one second. And Rhonda and Carolyn Ellsworth.
Are those like, is it the same owner of each of those properties that just wants to divide?
No, there's four different, four different properties here that we're talking about.
Right, but I'm saying within each property, it's the same owner that wants to divide or segregate, right? Like it's not several.
Yes.
Okay, alright. Well, in that case, I move that we approve those four.
Okay. I'll second it. So we have a motion to second to combine, divide, and segregate land with four different people, which has been recorded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It's passed. Okay, is a prosecutor outside? I mean, not prosecutor, but.
Hang on here, he, that was just him.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. John, are you on there?
I am. Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay. COVID is running around down here. Allison and Tom both are waiting, uh, test results or have been around someone that had COVID. I got over COVID, uh, I got out of house arrest yesterday. So, um, if you would like to go ahead and do your presentation on the public hearing?
Absolutely. I'm, I'm looking forward to getting out of house arrest tomorrow. So, um, I understand everyone's situation. Thanks for letting me participate remotely. The purpose of the public hearing today is simply to provide the opportunity for any member of the public to, uh, express, ask questions, express concerns, uh, or, uh, comment on the request of the Boy Scouts of America and Arrow West Virginia, Inc. for certain modifications to the existing bonds of the county commission. The county, it, it, by way of history, the county commission issued bonds in twenty-ten and twenty-twelve to assist the scouts in financing improvements at the Summit Bectel Reserve. The bonds themselves are leased, or they're, excuse me, they're industrial development revenue bonds county, so there are, the county is not obligated financially or otherwise in any way, shape, or form on the bonds. The county is simply a conduit for the financing. And, and it, by issuing the bonds, it allows the scouts to take advantage of a lower interest, interest rate due to federal tax exemption on the bonds. Uh, this is no different than what a hospital does when it finance, a not-for-profit hospital does when it finances, uh, issues bonds to finance improvements such as WVU or Charleston Medical Center, whoever it may be. Under, since the bonds are tax exempt, the Internal Revenue Service requires that we have a hearing to allow members of the public to, again, ask questions or express concerns or comment generally about, uh, the issuance of the bonds. So and in this case, again, we're not reissuing new bonds, we're simply amending terms of the existing bonds. I provided a memo to, uh, Amy and Ruth that outlines the, uh, it gives summary of the changes in the terms of the bonds. For example, the terms of the bonds are gonna be extended approximately ten years. The payment schedule's being changed somewhat to allow the scouts to uh, pay more of the principal, uh, on the back end of the bonds. And, and those sorts of, of changes that are set forth in the memo. So the process for the county commission, there's no action by the county commission today at all. The process i- is for the commission today is simply to open the floor for the public hearing, let any member of the public comment, and then and then close the public hearing when, when there's no more, no additional members of the public. And that's, that's all we're doing today. And Patrick Starrett, who is the chief, uh, is this, he's the chief officer of the Summit Bectel Reserve is on the phone, is on the Zoom call today as well to answer any questions or provide additional context for the commissioner or members of the public.
Okay, well, we will open the discussion on this public hearing at this point in time. Uh, are there any concerns or questions concerning what was just talked to you about? At this time, there are no questions. So John, we'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, so really all we need to do is, if, if the clerk will reflect in the minutes that the public hearing was held. Just so everyone's aware, it was noticed, we put the ads in the paper and have the, uh, and we have those, um, and we have those, uh, the affidavit publication back. Just, we need to let the minutes reflect that the, the hearing was held and no member of the public chose to speak. And the next, um, step in the process here is there will be a, uh, resolution presented to the county commission at the second meeting in October uh, to approve the amendments. We'll have those documents to you well in advance so that the commissioners can review them, and then any member of the public that has any questions will have their, you know, can can review them as well. So that's all we have today.
All right, that sounds good.
Yes, it does. No motion, no nothing. It'll just be presented on October sixth for the resolution for us to sign.
Uh, actually, yes, but actually, it'll be the second meeting in October. So it'll be the, was it twenty-seventh?
Oh, October twenty-second? The seventh, okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, all right. If any questions come up in the interim, please don't hesitate to call. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Everybody stay safe. Bye-bye.
Okay, so at this time, uh, due to the COVID situation we're going through as county, unless, uh, Allison or Tom have any other questions, we will, uh, close the meeting.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, Tom? Tom says he seconds the adjournment to close the meeting. Okay. All right, so our next meeting will be October the sixth. Everything that was scheduled for today uh, has been moved to that agenda. And thank you guys very much. And have a wonderful week and try to get better. We'll talk to you later.
Bye.
Brian, everything got closed down because of COVID.